And again, of course, why we're able to do this is the building department will be giving staffing help. The nonprofit is up fronting 50% of the renovation. And we've applied for CDBG funds for the other 50%. So all good news on the front of other sources. So again, the Council on Aging's town portion of the budget now represents 70% of our total funding. As we apply for grants and work very hard to continue to not ask for town funding. The success, as you can see, really, again, we would have to close our doors or not be able to do these projects without the dedication of our volunteers. There's over 314, that last count, last year, volunteers who walk through our doors providing services. Like we were jumping Frank Carroll, what he has and his wife on Brookline Camp, on the Age Friendly Cities Town Initiative, our own Council on Aging budget. Our estimate is that the volunteer services is 40,000 hours per year. If you do the math, that's the equivalent of 21 full-time positions. It is every time that I stand here, it is without a doubt that the volunteers, which will be honored as they are every April, April 10th, are our lifeblood. And they are the ones that make the senior center thrive and vibrant and the, on all the projects that we want to be able to accomplish based on those hours of service. The remaining issue, which is something that we've talked about with this board, is around our concern of the need of strong social services. And some of the impact has still around the recession. Fuel assistance, food stamps, those direct services that are essential to keeping seniors healthy. But there's another level of complication that exists in the community. And often, our social work services, though, under the radar because we believe strongly in protecting the confidentiality of many of these very difficult cases. When I was in front of the advisory board last week, we reported, it just came in, an 83-year-old woman who was evicted from her apartment. She had been through the whole legal system and had counsel, but the judge did give her an eviction notice. She did not come to the attention of the senior center or social workers until the 11th hour. She, I think, was in denial, and thank goodness, her physician informed her to come for assistance. And so that's an example of some of the cases that can eat up hours of our social service time. And the one increase that we're looking for in this year's budget is one of our longtime social workers is retiring in June. And we have said if we go to a lower level, she's at a clinical social worker two position. If we hire at the entry level, which is a clinical social worker one, we are requesting that that increase from 20 hours to 30 hours. And again, the Council on Aging really has taken, thanks to the leadership of Agnes Rogers and the Budget Committee, of not being greedy and asking for a full-time position if we can make do with 30 hours. So that is one of the requests in this budget process. Be more than happy to take questions or comments.
Thanks very much. That was a pretty thorough overview. Yeah, I just want to add, and I'm the, this board's representative to the Council on Aging, and I just want to add a couple of things. I'm also on the CDBG committee. And we do, as Ruthann mentioned, continue to be concerned about the CDBG money. And there are a couple of critical ways that that money is being used at the senior center. Because there's a great many seniors who are, senior citizens are in a category where they're eligible for CDBG money. But in addition, many of those senior citizens are low income. And so there, some of the CDBG money goes to the Senior Jobs Program. And many of those people end up working at the senior center. And that's the people who answer the phones and, you know, greet people at the various events and things like that. And the other one is for the BETS, the BETS Program, which is the voucher system for taxis. And these are programs that, in addition, this year, the CDBG Committee is recommending that they get the $60,000 to help renovate the space left down in the basement after the gym moved up to the second floor. So those can, because the senior center is a busy, busy place. And it's full to overflowing every time I go there. And they need all the space they can get. But we do want to ask you, Mr. Fleckner, to sort of keep in mind the concern over those programs long-term. If the, if the CDBG money comes through this year, it's supposed to be about the same as last year. But we have had some significant cuts over the past five years or so. And certainly, this climate that we have now, I think, makes everyone nervous about this kind of money. And so just ask you to be thinking about longer-term, you know, how those programs might be funded if we are not to get the CDBG money that we've had in the past. Other questions?
Yes.
This is actually maybe a question for the town administrator or Ms. Goff. I just want to make sure that you're getting what you're borrowing for here. You mentioned that the social worker would be 30 hours a week. And I see that the clinical social worker two is cut from 1.06 to 0.53, which I assume is the 20 hours or thereabouts.
Correct.
And it shows the clinical social worker one as 0.70 in the budget. Is that government speak for 30 hours?
No, no, we did not initially, we did not go up to that level. I believe the advisory committee, either the subcommittee or the full committee, has recommended that. So we'll go back and look at that. But we did not go to that level. I think we basically level funded it from a dollar point of view. And that increased in several hours, but not up to 30.
Okay, so it would, the advisory committee is essentially recommending a 0.75 for 30 hours?
Yes.
Okay, good. Thank you.
All right, other questions? Then, thank you very much, Ms. Dobek. As I said earlier, we're just listening now and getting our questions answered, obviously. We do appreciate all the good work that you and your volunteers and staff do. And we'll be taking the budget up for vote at a later time. I wish I could give you the date right now, but I can't. We'll let you go.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. What's the difference in cost?
It's probably less than $5,000.
It's small, small, small.
No, I, you know, we have in front of us the administrative's budget. We don't have the advisory committee's budget, which is the reason for the question.
I'll clarify. It's just great.
Okay, next item is the Emerald Necklace Bicycle project.
Good evening. Erin Gallantine, the Director of Parks and Open Space. And this evening, we are going to present for your review the Route 9 Emerald Necklace pedestrian and bicycle crossing project. This is a multi-joint project between, Julia Wait? A joint project between the Department of Public Works and the Planning and Community Development Department. And the project came out of a Board of Selectment committee, had multiple stakeholders that were involved in the decision-making process, and also four different commissions. So the Conservation Commission, Park and Recreation Commission, Transportation Board, Planning Board, Bike Advisory Committee, Brookline Bikes, the Brookline Green Space Alliance, High Street Hill Association, Riverway Island Neighborhood Association, in addition to the Emerald Necklace Conservancy and Department of Conservation and Recreation, were all on that committee and unanimously recommend this project to move forward. Now, kind of the real impetus for this, I would venture to really need, and this has been something that we, the town has wanted to remedy for a long time now, is that there is some safety loo funding that we can leverage for construction. And so we are looking to do that in order to move the construction portion of this project forward. Okay, so the primary goals for this project are to establish a safe, accurate crossing of Route 9, make safety improvements at the Pond Ave., Jamaica Way intersection, connect pedestrians from Olmsted Park to the Riverway, make the area more attractive and safe, and coordinate with and complement the Gateway East project. These were all sort of the driving goals that led us to the recommendation that you're going to see. And specifically, this is a singular pedestrian actuated signal with park enhancements, roadway improvements, and a multi-use pathway that makes that connection between Olmsted Park and the Riverway. You know, one thing I'll note is that we did an extensive presentation before the Board of Selectment in December. And in addition to kind of our primary objective here, which is the Route 9 crossing, we presented several other crossings that were not explored to the same depth and extent as this one. We have made adjustments to that report, but we are not looking for any action on any other portion of that. We're presenting strictly the Route 9 crossing this evening. And kind of just in summary, we did have kind of over a year-long process of public meetings, great participation. We coordinated and had many staff-level meetings with Boston Parks, with Boston Transportation, with Department of Conservation and Recreation. We also have had follow-up meetings with Masco, EDAB, and the Transportation Board. So you're very enthusiastic about this project. We have the right partners on board. And what I'm going to do now is turn the presentation over to Todd, who's going to walk you through the project area.
Thank you. Todd Crane, Transportation Administrator for the Town of Brookline. And to just give you an oversight of the area that we're talking about, like Erin said, we're not, although other areas up and down the Riverway wasn't looked at, this is all we're asking to move forward on. Essentially, it is from Pond Avenue across Washington Street, Route 9, and Down River Road. So that is the area that we're asking to move forward on tonight. Just to begin on the first section, on the area of River Road, the Brookline Avenue, Riverway, on-off ramp. This area was looked at to make pedestrian and bicycle improvements. Some of the areas that we were concerned about as we looked at this was the very, very long crosswalk at the end of River Road where Brookline Avenue meets. Longer crosswalks mean longer time for pedestrians to be within the crosswalk and have more issues or conflicts with vehicles. So, and what we saw is we observed, as our consultants observed, although that is stop-controlled, a lot of cars make sweeping turns out of there. They, as they go to enter onto, off of River Road, onto Brookline Avenue, they'll take a quick look, sort of roll through, and then pull out on Brookline Avenue and not come to a full stop because the geometrics allow them to make that movement, which is unsafe for pedestrians trying to cross there. The other area that we looked at that is unsafe for pedestrians and cyclists in that area is the off-ramp to, from the DCR, Riverway. You have an on-ramp and off-ramp. The off-ramp, although it is very low volume, again, because of the way it enters into River Road, it creates a wide, a very long crosswalk for pedestrians to try to cross, as well as cyclists to cross there. And again, because of the geometric alignment, cars can come off of River Road where they are typically traveling faster than they normally would on, sorry, off of the Riverway, traveling faster where they normally would on River Road or local roads. And instead of making, sort of slowing down and making sure they're safe, they're seen taking that corner rather fast, making that sweeping turn onto River Road, and again, not coming to stop, not making sure that pedestrians are there and safe. So what we, our consultant looked at and recommended and the committee adopted, the first thing is teeing off the intersection of River Road and Brookline Avenue. This is something we've used in many locations throughout the town of Brookline and is used throughout the country for traffic calming purposes. What the teeing off does is it shortens up the amount of crosswalk that the pedestrians and cyclists have to cross. It also tightens up the geometrics of the intersection, forcing cars to come to a complete stop and then enter and make that turn. So it also includes a small divider island to separate the, those entering River Road from Brookline Avenue and those exiting. Again, what this does is those vehicles that are coming down Brookline Avenue and making a right turn onto River Road, they won't be able to make that at a fast turn. They'll have to slow down, which is safer for the pedestrians. The next improvement that we looked at for Brookline Avenue and River Road is actually close the off-ramp. The traffic count showed that in the peak hours, the off-ramp has less than 20 vehicles exiting from the Riverway onto River Road. So we can actually pick up parked space as well as to shorten the crosswalk distance for cyclists and pedestrians by just closing the off-ramp and just keeping the on-ramp available. We had looked at taking, at closing the on-ramp as well. However, there's no alternative for those vehicles coming from Boston that want to access the, the Riverway heading towards Jamaica Plain. There's no easy way unless we force them onto Brookline Avenue all the way down to, onto the Riverway-B Brookline Avenue intersection, which we all know is congested. We weren't looking to add extra congestion on Brookline Avenue. So just a summary of the... The Riverway southbound ramp to River Road due to the low volume, which is supported by DCR. To reconfigure River Road at Brookline Avenue to increase the green space and parkland area to reduce the pedestrian slash bike exposure in the crosswalks. The approximate cost is $300,000 for the construction. The next area is River Road itself. Again, the goal here is to create a safe, shared-use path for pedestrians and cyclists to travel from Route 9 down River Road to Brookline Avenue or vice versa. And what we had looked at there, where we explored various one-way options, either heading towards Brookline Avenue or heading away from Brookline Avenue, were explored. The northbound one-way was not feasible since there was no reasonable way for vehicles traveling from the west to access River Road. Again, what would happen with that is that those vehicles, west to access, those vehicles coming from Huntington Avenue, in order to access River Road, would once again have to go down Brookline Avenue and back around. And our goal was not to add congestion on Brookline Avenue in that intersection. The self-bound one-way was not feasible because we'd be rerouting, again, 300-plus vehicles through the Route 9 Brookline Ave. signal, which would create more congestion at that intersection. When we looked at keeping it two-way, which was obviously the desired, we met with the businesses in the area and it was desired to keep it two-way, River Road two-way, and try to save as much parking as possible. When we looked at the right-of-way, there's 38 feet at its tightest point. And that would allow for the two 10-foot travel lanes, one in each direction, so we can keep it two-way. It would allow for a seven-foot parking lane, which meets federal standards for the width of a parking lane. So we can keep the parking, which is used by those businesses and their visitors. And it would also allow for an 11-foot shared-use path adjacent to the wall, which is the green pathway that you see running the entire length of River Road. And that shared-use path would be an improved path for pedestrians and cyclists to share, to make that connection all the way through River Road. And as you can see, we also do significant planting, adding green space and beautifying the area, making it a more desirable location for joggers, walkers, more of a recreation location. In terms of the parking, beautifying the area, it might mean in some locations, in order to create an extra buffer between the shared-use path and the street, to remove some parking spaces to create that buffer. As of right now, we're doing everything we can to maximize parking. But they are open to further discussions as we move further along in this process as a trade-off to get a nicer area, maybe to lose some parking spaces. So we'll continue the talks with them. Again, the approximate, so just to give you, again, a summary here. What we'll have at its tightest point is two 10-foot travel lanes, so we'll maintain the two-way access, a seven-foot parking lane, and an 11-foot shared-use pathway adjacent to the wall. The approximate cost to construct this is $325,000. I'm actually going to...
Just to total, you said 300 before plus 325, right? So we're at 625? Is that, is that a running total?
Yep, that's the running total.
Okay.
Could you just go to that slide really quickly?
Yep.
There's explore parking removal to increase buffer. Is that on the table or is that...
Yep, that is on the table. What we did is when we met with the businesses, we talked about the trade-offs between either being able to create more of a buffer between the pathway and the roadway in order to regain some green space, extra tree plantings to beautify the area. And they were open for further discussions along that line, says sort of a trade-off that if they can lose, if they were willing to give up some parking spaces for that. But again, that's something moving forward. What we have planned here in the concept design is to maximize parking and to minimize any parking loss. But as you can see, the buffer, if you're heading from Washington Street heading down River Road, it's a very wide buffer, a lot of green space, a lot of street trees. But as it narrows out, you lose that buffer and it becomes the curb and then the pathway. So it's really a trade-off on whether they want to give up parking to gain more trees.
Well, then, maybe I can ask you a follow-up because I was actually curious about that. Are you assuming that the pathway, at the point that it is adjacent to where the parking would be, is raised separate?
Yes, it's a raised, it's similar, all of this you see is raised.
Okay.
It's a sidewalk level.
Right.
It's not at grade with the roadway. It's all raised. Essentially, a shared-use path is a very wide sidewalk that can accommodate cyclists and pedestrians at the same time.
Todd, can I ask you quickly?
Absolutely.
It actually relates to the previous slide. The, the turn from Brookline Ave. onto River Road, if you're headed north on, on Brookline Ave., so that sidewalk kind of makes a little, little U there, upside-down U. That's new, that sidewalk? It just, it looks very similar to what's there already.
The proposed, we do increase the sidewalk. If you actually look out there, the asphalt is very worn down. We're going to raise it up, make a granite sidewalk with ADA ramp, compliant wheelchair ramps at that location. And as they make that turn, you do have the small divider island with green plantings in the middle. So that, when they make that turn, they do have to take it slowly so that they can slow down, see any pedestrians, instead of being able to make a very sort of fast turn.
So it has more to do with the condition of what's there right now?
Correct. On the, on the Brookline ice and coal side, yes. On the opposite side, we're teeing it off.
The other side I get is a change. That part looks pretty similar to what's there.
Yep, we're just making the improvements in terms of the sidewalk, the ADA-compliant wheelchair ramps.
Thank you.
I have a question on that, the shared pathway. Are you going to mark, like, one side for bicycles and...
Generally, shared pathways are not marked up and down. Boston has them in other communities.
Well, like in Europe, they mark them, you know, for bicycles and like that.
If they're, if they're wider than 11 foot, you can mark them. But 11 foot, because it's not wide enough to mark, to designate sort of pedestrians here, cyclists there, you allow them to free-flow, similar to what you have on the Esplanade or in different parts of Boston.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, because if, you know, you get a lot of strollers, you know, and the bicyclists have to weave in around them. Do you think that's okay?
It, it works very well. I, I walk the Esplanade a lot, so it works very well there. Also, it works, the Emerald Necklace, as it stretches down Commonwealth Avenue in Boston, there's a wide shared-use path there, the shared by cyclists, as well as people walking, joggers, et cetera.
And my other, just the question about the parking versus the buffers. That little stretch, there's a lot of auto repair and stuff.
Yep.
And that is like just about the only area in town that's still zoned industrial.
Yep.
So it's sort of the only place they can be.
Correct, yeah. That, that's why we said that, you know, our goal here was to maximize this parking. However, in our discussions with them, they were actually, as we showed them this increased buffer in Greenway and the improvements that can be made, they were open to, if they were not using some of that parking, they wanted to find out who was in fact using that parking because some of their businesses weren't. They're afraid that it's people from Boston or from the LMA parking there. So as we follow up, we'll actually look at who is using that. We'll provide that to them and if in fact it's not, you know, they said that, their, their feeling is that when they show up, some of that parking's already taken, that if they're willing to give up some of that space to increase the beautification of the area, that's a discussion they want to have. And that was actually put on the table by them.
Todd, just, just to clarify, will parking spaces be taken from there only with the agreement of the businesses in the area?
It would have to go through the Transportation Board, public process. I don't think that you would have the parking eliminated there without their support in front of the Transportation Board. Josh Saper's here to speak for the board, I'm not. But in terms of my view as staff and recommendation to the Transportation Board based on the type of usage here, again, my goal was to maximize parking as we went through that process.
What you're suggesting is that it might be an appropriate location for some sort of permit system for the businesses, if there, if there are parking cars out there, parking customers' cars out there to have a permit in the window and...
Yep, absolutely. If in fact that, that is the, you know, the usage there. But again, like I said, going forward, it was the businesses themselves that said that they would be willing to have that discussion. It's not something that we had put on the table because, again, we knew how important parking is in that area.
I'm going to come back to this slide on another question.
Sure. Oh, do you want to...
Well, this, this actually is from Ms. Gallantine, so we'll come back. Let's keep going. Let's keep going.
So I'm actually going to jump over now and sort of do the bookend before we get to the crossing. And the next area we have is the Pond Avenue. This is existing conditions right now, the Pond Avenue on and off ramp to the Riverway. This is Washington Street. You have a very sort of wide no-man's land here where cyclists and pedestrians are trying to make this crossing. There is not a crosswalk right now for them to utilize. There are no ramps, ADA-compliant ramps for them to utilize. Cars are able to make this turn very fast. We had looked at this when we did the Pond Avenue traffic calming. And because this was all, we knew this was in the works, we, otherwise identified this as a problem. We sort of postponed it to this project. But essentially, cars come around here and they, they're able to make the sweeping turn. And either they're going to shoot straight across here to go up or they're going to continue on Pond Avenue. And unfortunately for the pedestrian here, trying to make this crossing, they don't know which way the car's going until they get right about here, creating...
I would even add that vehicles coming in the opposite direction don't know either.
Exactly. Vehicles coming this way on Pond Avenue also don't know. They know the vehicle's coming here. Unfortunately, there is accident history here that if the, you know, if this car's coming and they think this one's going this way, they go out. And unfortunately, they could be wrong. So, so what we're looking to do is to clean up this general area on Pond Avenue for the safety of pedestrians, motorists, and cyclists. And as you see down here, what we're proposing is a realignment of the on and off ramp. As you come off, we're actually going to have a raised crosswalk for cyclists and pedestrians to cross at, to make their way to the signal. Cars will come here. It'll be stop-controlled. They'll be slowed down because of the raised element. And then they'll be able to turn safely left or right. Cars coming off of Washington Street... Cars coming off of Washington Street with the divider island and with this section sort of tightened up, and they'll make this turn a lot slower. And again, by the time they get here, they'll either be making a left turn to go on, these cars can, moving from Pond Avenue towards Washington Street, will have an easy prediction on, they'll be able to know where they're going and make a safe call, so to improve safety in this area. This grabs a whole bunch of other information in terms of the crossing. But, so essentially, what we're looking at, in terms of the Pond Avenue, we're gonna improve the realignment for Pond Avenue, where Pond Avenue and the Riverway is, with a raised crosswalk for pedestrian and cyclist safety. We're gonna tee off the way that the cars exit and enter the on-ramp, so that they do so in a safer and slower manner, and that's more predictable to the motorist as well as the pedestrian and cyclist. And now, I'm gonna jump up to the, sort of the larger piece of the project, which is the proposed signal on Washington Street to create that safe crossing. As pedestrians and cyclists now have a safe access from either River Road or Pond Avenue, we propose redoing the, the system, the, the pathway system in order to line them up better directly across from each other along Washington Street. They'll come to, there'll be a pedestrian actuated signal with push buttons, and essentially, driver, a cyclist or a pedestrian will come up to this point, they'll stop, they'll press the button. And unlike the pedestrian actuated signals that you're used to in front of, let's say, the Old Lincoln School further up, where you press the button, it automatically triggers, goes yellow-red, and you walk right away. Because this is going to be interconnected with the Gateway East project and the signals at Huntington, in South Huntington in Boston, what, when the pedestrian presses that button, it, it's not instant. It places a call so the next time in the phasing, it works like any other pedestrian signal that you have at a normal intersection, the next time the phasing comes up, it will give them the walk sign, so that they'll be able to walk or cycle safely across in either direction. And what we did in order to make sure, the approximate location of the crossing is right in this direction here, and what we wanted to do is unlike other, when we put in new traffic signals that are related to, let's say, developments, we have a certain increase in the traffic volume that we're expecting, so we have to do counts to make sure that the extra traffic volumes don't exceed and add congestion. That's not the case here. We're not adding any extra motor vehicles to this location. What we're essentially doing is at this location, carving out 20-foot wide space to create the crosswalk and the two stop bars. But in order to make sure that the current traffic did not back up into either the South Huntington intersection or into the Brookline Ave. intersection, we wanted to make sure we had enough queuing space on either side of where that crosswalk would be. In terms of, from the crosswalk, traveling back towards Brookline Avenue on either side, you have approximately 260 feet of queuing storage. From the crosswalk, traveling towards South Huntington eastbound, you have approximately 330 feet of length on either side of queuing storage. So in total, you have 590 feet of queuing storage lane. That includes the 20 feet that we carved out. Sorry, does not include the 20 feet we carved out. And we looked at the current counts during the AM peak and the PM peak, and what you see is for westbound direction, approaching Brookline Avenue from South Huntington, the queuing, again, storage available is 590 feet. The average queuing in the AM is 277 feet, so we have plenty of space. The 95th percentile queuing, which is the worst-case scenario, is 325 feet in the AM peak, again, we have enough storage space. For the PM queuing westbound, which is the heavier movement for westbound, heading away from Boston, there's, the average is 518 feet, again, we're under the available 590. And the 95th percentile, which is the worst-case scenario, is 571 feet. So westbound, whether the average or worst-case scenario, we are under the available storage. For eastbound, South Huntington, again, we have the 590 feet worth of queuing. The AM, which is the heavier movement in this direction, the average is 439 feet, so we're under the 590 feet, so we have enough queuing space to, to hold the vehicles. The 95th percentile, which is the worst-case scenario, we equal the available storage. For the PM, it's a lighter movement in this direction, it's 237 average and 346 95th percentile, which is the worst-case scenario. So just to go back, essentially, when this is red here, in the worst-case scenario, we have enough storage from Brookline Avenue all the way to South Huntington, without any issues on either side, when you have a red light, except in the worst-case scenario.
Don't want to challenge your definition of the worst-case scenario, but I will tell you, on personal observation, which has nothing to do with how any of these lights are triggered by any, or, because they're not coordinated today.
Correct.
There are frequently situations which may be related to the fact that the fire station is activated and all of the signals go into some other mode, whatever that is. But I just want to be really clear, that there are actually times, and I would love to know what the statistical occurrence of them is, but I don't, when traffic is literally blocked, cars from Huntington all the way back to Cypress, virtually, not moving, and including blocking the Washington and High Street intersection.
That actually segues very good in the relationship of Gateway East project to what we're doing. The reason why it segues is right now you have an intersection, signalized intersection here, which is Brookline Avenue and Washington Street. You have a signalized intersection here, which is at the fire station, Washington Street, High and Route 9. None of this right now is coordinated. You also have South Huntington within Boston, which is not coordinated and also running on a different phasing timing. So when this is red, this is not necessarily red, it could be green, this could be, again, triggered by the fire department at any one time. None of this is coordinated right now, which is causing the backups in the morning that you see back towards, you know, the Old Lincoln and even further in the cases when the fire department does put in the preemptive call. What Gateway East does, and this is one of the things, the reasons why the planning department and DPW was moving forward on Gateway East, is that it not only creates the crossing, at-grade crossing here for pedestrians, access from north of, sorry, south of Route 9 over to north of Route 9, but it coordinates these traffic signals here, so that you have an even flow and an even movement for pedestrians and for motorists. And the way that this ties in to our area, this is the Brookline Avenue, Route 9, this is where we're proposing the crossing with the signal, with the pedestrian actuated signal, and then on this side is the South Huntington. The Gateway East and the South Huntington proposal signal timing are actually not tied together right now by interconnect, but are tied in by the same phasing as well as the same timing. And what we're proposing is that this pedestrian actuated signal will be interconnected to this traffic signal system. So when this is red, so when the pedestrians get to cross here, pedestrians will cross here. It's not gonna preempt it, it's not gonna sort of, you know, throw a monkey wrench in halfway through the cycle. It's all gonna be connected together. On the timing, we've been working with BTD from the very beginning on making sure that the South Huntington and Huntington can be connected, similar to other traffic signals that we have within the town, along Commonwealth Avenue area, Monfort Street, Connecticut, Chicalton, which is all tied into their system as well. So that, that would address the backups that you see right now that are due to the fact that you have all these different signals running independently of each other.
Oh, sorry, Slagman Banker.
Yeah, I, I actually, what I'm wondering is what the impact of this will be on Route 9 traffic. Your queuing analysis basically says, look, there's enough space for traffic to back up from Brookline Avenue to South Huntington Avenue, and from South Huntington Avenue to Brookline Ave., basically.
Yep.
And, and actually, I think the more cars that are jammed there, the better, in the sense that when this light goes red, you're really not holding up any traffic. You're just clearing a path for pedestrians to cross if traffic is already backed up.
This will only go red if there's a pedestrian call, and essentially, when this goes red, it's because Huntington was red and this is red, so these cars can't go any further except for maybe, you know, getting a couple feet on this side, depending where they are in the queue. But essentially, the, the impact in terms of the traffic operations is that it won't, I believe that, you know, I can go back and look at the queuing, but essentially, the queuing won't back up and cause congestion in either of the intersections, which is always, which was our goal with this.
But what, what about, Todd, when you, when you don't have the backup and basically traffic is flowing freely? How, how will this be coordinated? Let's, you know, I'm wondering how you coordinate this with the light on the west and the light on the east, if-
Well, this will be, this will be interconnected. So if you come up and you place a call here.
Yep.
When it's not a call, it's always on green.
Yep.
It's not gonna stop. When there's a call placed, it'll enter in the phasing that does affect this phasing and does affect this phasing. But given the amount of vehicles that are always, always present at these intersections throughout the day, you're always gonna have the 130-second cycle working in terms of this movement, this movement, and then this movement. So it just blends in with that 130-second cycle.
Essentially, it will stop some cars. For example, if, if the signal, the eastbound signal on Route 9 at Brookline Avenue is green, cars will get through there, maybe at the end of that cycle, and when that goes red, this will go red, so they'll get stopped here.
Correct. Yeah, they'll be stopped here, instead of getting a little further jump up here, South Huntington will be red as well. So they might be stopped here instead of here. But they're still within that queuing length and they're not backing up.
And cars turning off of Brookline Avenue and heading eastbound would also be-
Correct. And what we actually wanted, one of the main concerns when we had the meeting with the technical subcommittee of the Transportation Board, which is made up of Gustries and Chris Dempsey and Ali Tally, who are all transportation professionals, their main concern was when the Brookline Avenue is making this turn, that there's the availability to also keep this turn, which is a heavy turn onto Pond Avenue. There's enough lane space here for them to make this turn if cars are just backed up to here. That way, they're not restricted further based on the signal stopping distance up here for the crosswalk. So if you're coming off of Brookline Avenue and you're looking to get on Pond Avenue, you're still gonna be able to do that. If you're looking to go straight, yeah, you'll be stopped there.
The red light on Route 9 and at South Huntington Avenue is 130 seconds?
They're, they're, as of right now, both will run on 130-second cycle.
Is that-
Which means all the different movements will happen within 130 seconds.
For one direction?
No, what it is is-
65 seconds?
When, when you have 130-second cycle, that's 130 seconds to make all these different movements. It's divided up, and it's actuated.
So it's essentially 65 seconds in each direction?
Approximately, yeah, depending on how they sequence the turnings, how the turning movements go.
Is that enough time for a pedestrian to get across Route 9?
Yes. The, it's, it's, the average pedestrian crosses three feet per second, the older pedestrians are four to four and a half feet per second.
Might be the other way around.
What we, yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, it is the other way around, thank you. What we have also here is actually Mass DOT wide enough, break in the median to-
Yeah, there's a refuge.
For, for safe refuge. We're also gonna be putting, just in case somebody does get caught there, if they're on sort of the tail end of the, the don't walk and they decide to walk anyways, there'll be another pedestrian actuated pedestal there, so they can press it if they're stuck within the refuge area. Because again, it only is triggered when somebody presses the button.
Is Mass, final question on this crossing, is Mass DOT, do they have to approve this?
Yes.
Because, you know, from our experience, further west on Route 9, all they care about is Route 9 traffic as opposed to cross traffic.
Yeah, this, because we're using the federal funding, the safety loop, this has to go through the tip process and the Mass DOT 25, 75% project. So they will have to, same way with the Gateway East, they'll, they'll come to look at our assumptions, they'll look at the proposed layout, they'll look at the traffic signal plans, and it'll work its way through that process.
All right.
So they will have to sign off on it.
Okay.
Todd, there's a lot of nice green circles on the median strip and on River Road. Is it realistic? I mean, you're gonna have, you think you'll-
I'm not the tree person. In, in terms of whether they can survive here?
Given salt and, and exhaust fumes and everything else, and the limited amount of, of drain space, you know, I, I don't know if we, if we're being realistic.
Erin could probably answer this better than I can. What I can tell you is that our consulting team was not only GPI for traffic and Alter for Bicycle, two of the leading in their fields, but also Presley Associates, which is one of the leading landscape, you know, consultants in the area, and they were actually the ones that did the design. These weren't traffic guys saying, let's put a tree there. It was actually Presley Associates making the determination that this is a wide enough area for these trees to survive. And they'll probably look at different types of trees that were able to survive there.
And that's River, River Road looks like there's some plantings on there too?
Yep, there are plantings throughout, that was one of the main priorities of this, was not just to provide the pathway, but also to beautify the area.
And the budget estimates include the plantings?
Yes, it does, includes everything.
Slagman Banker.
Yeah, I'm glad you're back to that slide and talking about trees, Ms. Gallantine. I want to ask about my trees behind Brookline Animal Hospital and the fact that Brookline Animal Hospital has been using that area. What is the status?
So your trees are not doing well. And they have been used by, you know, Brookline Animal Hospital for some time now, but I have had conversations with management staff over there, they have come up with a, a different approach and protocol for walking their dogs and curbing their dogs. And frankly, I'm very encouraged that we will be able to provide a healthier environment moving forward for trees to thrive.
Yeah, because this really, you know, if we're doing all of this and putting this sort of effort and money into this process, it, well, at least in that area, it will all get undone by the, by the practice that's been going on.
Absolutely, and, you know, to, to their credit, they were really excited about the plans, about the improvements. They see it as an incredible value add to what feels like a very sort of derelict place right now. And, you know, and they offered their assistance, so I think, I, I'm encouraged and I feel that they'll be on board with us moving forward.
What is the protocol that they're proposing?
They have, they're, they have a sort of an alleyway there, and so they're, they're fencing off a portion of that, and they'll be using that, and they've created some different routes for actually walking their dogs that don't involve going through the park there.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Kind of wish Stanley Spiegel were here, he'd say something about dogwoods and bark and stuff.
No, it's, it's actually, it was, it was an issue that was pointed out to me by a park user, and, you know, I went out there and, and it really, I think, has been a real problem with respect to the survival of those trees. And now particularly, if we're making this investment, I think it becomes even more so an issue.
Yeah, we agree.
So, are we about there, folks? There's still more, all right.
One last question.
Last questions?
Yeah. Our, our cost for this is basically $40,000, is that correct?
As, as of right now, yes. That's what's, yes, that's, that's what we're proposing. And the project, the muddy, I'm sorry, the Emerald Necklace Crossing project that you see here before you is 1.5 million, and we're looking to leverage the federal earmark. Both of those ramps are associated with the DCR Parkway, and so we're looking for funding and partnership from DCR. We're also CDBG eligible, so we're looking at, at that and then a greater DOT share. So that's, that's the plan. So that's, that's the plan that we have moving forward.
Okay, Selectman Daly.
Yeah, I just want to say, I'm, I'm very much in favor of what you've just described. And I, I continue to be opposed to the earlier recommendation for Netherlands Road. And I want to say, I appreciate that the, on page five of the report, Erin has put in that, that members of Board of, of Selectmen express concern about the Netherlands Road recommendations. And while the alternative one is technically feasible, it's not necessarily desirable by the town of Brookline and should be revisited if ever considered for improvements. So I just want to say for the record that I will certainly vote for what we've, what we've just heard about. I am not accepting all of the elements of this report.
I, I concur with that. The original discussion was about accepting the report. And I think it was clear that the Board of Selectmen did not agree with the Netherlands Road recommendation. And as a result, this is limited to these particular areas with not even accepting or taking in hand the rest of the report.
Very true. And frankly, we just wanted to let you know that we had incorporated your comments and that the work is done on that.
Yeah. Well, you know, frankly, with result, with, with respect to Netherlands Road, I think the, the views of the Board were not incorporated in the final report. It, it still recommended closure in one direction at Netherlands Road. And, you know, my personal preference would be that it be kept open in two ways on Netherlands Road to provide access to the hospitals. And that would be eliminated by the, the report with respect to Netherlands Road. But that's not before us today.
It is not.
Ditto.
Okay. So what we're being asked to do, I think specifically, is to approve the proposal for the pedestrian-activated crossing and the limited improvements to the Pond Avenue intersection and the Riverway access points through River Road. Is, is that clear? We all are agreed that that's what we're being asked to do? Then I think the best way to go without making a very complicated vote is simply to say that those are the things that we approve. And if you want to be more detailed in a proposed vote, that's fine with me. I'm, I'm open to a motion if you want to make one.
No, I, I think you've identified, it's the so-called River Road, Pond Avenue and Washington Street, Route 9 crossing bullets in the January 31st letter
Okay.
from Mr. Safer.
Very well. Now, is that clear with regard to how you would be able to record this? All right, then I'm going to say so moved. And just to be clear, we're, we're limiting this vote to those components that lead to the Route 9 pedestrian-activated crossing for pedestrians and bicycles and the associated improvements from the intersection of River Road crossing Washington Street to the intersection at Pond Avenue. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daly?
Aye.
Selectman Banka?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
That's great. Thank you very much. And for next steps, we will be looking to hopefully have a grant that will help us then do an extra work order to move construction docks forward into the 25%, you know, DOT process.
And presumably, at that point in time, we should also have an update on the Gateway East project as well, I would think. Because they would need to be concurrent, right?
They will, they will continue to be coordinated throughout. Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Moving on and only slightly behind schedule, the next item before us is reviewing some departmental budgets, beginning with Veterans. Mr. McGrady. I thought I saw him, yes.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening and welcome.
Thank you. I'd like to begin, and if I didn't last year, I should have. But this year, I definitely have to begin by thanking you all. Because we've had, I've been doing this about 15 years with Veterans now. And I told the meeting people that I met within the budget, this probably is the most satisfying year that I've ever had as a Veterans agent because of a number of things we were able to do. But one of them was the jobs program that you gave us last year. What we did was we targeted young men and women who returned from the current war, who are, but we're not limiting it to, who are in school. And we're giving them an opportunity to work part-time for the town, either while they're in school. And I found that the real critical time is the drop-off period. When they graduate school, I had two this year, graduate school, they're living in town, their wives are working while they're going to college. So they're not eligible for a lot of other benefits because their wives' income makes them ineligible. But their, or their spouses, because it could be the other way around. But they're not making it. And this jobs program gives them that extra money that they need while they're looking for their first position after they graduate college. That's win one. Win two is, for a lot of these young men and women, it's an extra job on their resume. It's a local reference if they're not from here originally. It's a big boost in just extra training skills. And win three is what they've done for the other departments. Because these are young men and women with incredible skills that are self-motivated, that went to Iraq and Afghanistan and built the nation. So when you bring them to the wire closet and say, "Can you straighten this out?" And you have two days. And at lunchtime, they come back and say, "What do I do next, boss? Because I've already got it done." And I was told by the IT director that, you know, this summer, he had a lot of projects. And it, they were instrumental to him getting it done and keeping people on vacation schedules. I know that I had a captain, the Air Force, former Air Force captain that was changing careers in the clerk's office, instrumental. He was instrumental in helping them through the election period when they needed an extra hand. And this is not costing the departments anything. So to that end, we've done a tremendous amount of good. We also seen a number of our recently separated veterans. Some of them have been back for a few years, but sometimes it takes a while who find themselves in crisis. And we've been able to help them this year. Including a young man that was in a crisis and not getting what he needed from the VA, who came to my office, we activated the state SAVE team, and we got him the help he needed before it became a problem. We were able to, with the, working with Department of Veteran Services, we had a young woman that had lived here, anticipated her situation would be the same. And when she came back, found it wasn't. And she showed up at my office at 3:00 in the afternoon and said, "I have a half a tank of gas and an eight-year-old in the back of the car, and $50 in my wallet, no place to live tonight." And with the help of the state again, we were able to find her a place to live for the night and get her a emergency housing the next day. So it was a, it's been a win-win situation. The ability for benefit, for veterans to access benefits is getting more and more difficult. I mean, this week, I had a 87-year-old woman who told me her husband's 88. He's dying. He wants to die at home. He was promised services from the VA a month ago, and he didn't get them. And if you wait long enough, it won't become an issue. But in the meantime, she's struggling to take care of her husband by herself. So we helped her a little bit. She's getting at least some of the services she needed now, starting tomorrow. And Springwell's coming in. And I think between the two of them, the gaps are going to be filled and she's going to be okay. So when you start putting these things together, it, it's working very well. And I just want to thank you for that. Because we're taking care of the people that took care of us for generations. So thank you.
Are you still struggling with health services?
Absolutely.
I mean, I, I remember you handholding and delivering folks over to the hospital.
I still do that. And I'll keep doing that until I don't have to do that anymore. The young gentleman I was talking about, there was a crisis, went into the, he'd been trying to get help for six months. They changed his primary care, fell between the cracks. He, I thought I had resolved the problem. I got him an appointment. They gave him an appointment with a psychologist or a psychiatrist who couldn't prescribe medicine, who basically did nothing for him. I told him we'd go back next week and try again. I'd go with him. But before I could do that, there was a crisis at home. And he was really in danger. He was afraid he'd hurt his family, and he'd hurt himself before he would do that. And he told the VA that, and they said, "You need to come back on Monday. There's no one here right now." And that's inexcusable. And again, with the help of the SAVE team, we got him to the West Roxbury Hospital, and, and they took care of him right away. And, you know, the bottom line is, they got him some sleeping pills because he hadn't been able to sleep, it was a nightmare. And once he was able to get some sleep, it, it made the anxiety manageable and it scaled everything down. But you have to get the sleep to do that. And he couldn't get to see a doctor who could prescribe sleeping pills for six months. And that's ridiculous.
You said it. Okay. You want to talk about, any more about your budget details before we start asking you questions?
I basically asked for level funding. Again, some years are, it's kind of like the DPW predicting snow. I can't predict what's coming in any year, but this is an average budget. And, you know, it reflects some increases you gave me last year. So I don't think I need increases this year. And I think we can make it. And if not, then I'll come back and ask for something in the budget.
Come back and ask. Right. Okay. Selectman Daly?
Yeah, no, I just, I noticed on your performance indicators, one of them was the percentage of claims approved by the state. And your actuals for 2012 were 100%. And I just want to congratulate you. But I, I heard on the evening news tonight that, you know, the, the times for people getting any claims approved was something, up to something like 275 days. You know, almost, almost a year for somebody to get a claim approved. And I think that your efforts, you know, to make sure the right things are in those claims and your efforts to, to take people over to the hospital when they need to. I mean, to me, it's shocking that this country is neglecting all these people with severe PTSD and not, not giving them the, the care to which they're entitled. So I appreciate what you're doing.
I'd like to say thank you for that, but I'd be resting on my laurels and misrepresenting. The state claims are the ones that come into us that we provide from the town. So then we put in for reimbursement for it, and we work with the state to get it back. That's 100%.
Oh, okay.
The VA claims, they're coming a lot slower. Some of them are coming over a year now. Now, we have some successes. I got back from the Veterans Conference about two weeks ago. And we had a town retiree who lives in town still. And I put him in for well-deserved benefits that he should have been getting for 40 years. And he's going to get $3,000 a month for the rest of his life from the VA and the treatment he needs. A widow that I helped get her husband's benefits that were come to $96,000. One-time payment, but 96,000.
Wow.
And at the same week, I had two veterans that got 30% and 40%, which is between $300 and $400 a month. It also locks in their benefits so that someone can't decide. Because they, they make decisions at the VA that say, "Today, you're eligible for VA veteran, VA medical benefits, but tomorrow, you might not be." They do it based on economics. We have people in this town who are very successful, but they worked their whole lives to get that way. And their self-reti, their self, their retirement is based on their own income. They're not getting pensions from anybody. A lot of times, their social security is small because they, they were self-employed their whole lives. And it looks on paper like they have a lot of money. But that money has to outlast them, and it has to outlast a spouse who may be 10 years younger than they are. It could be around for another 20 years. That money isn't what it looks like on paper. And they've been getting services from the VA. And the VA will come back sometimes and say, "Hey, you've got too much money. You really don't need this, this medical help." But they do, because otherwise, they won't have any medical care. That's where we advocate also, to make sure that happens. And any veteran that can get a service-connected pension for what they deserve locks in those medical benefits. So sometimes, that's more important than the money.
Selectman Banka?
Yeah. I, I just want to say, Bill, it's, it's really we that should be thanking you. I'm sure that you saw the article in The Globe about communities in other parts of the state or in some of the suburbs that are sharing a Veterans Administrator among three or four different communities. And veterans just aren't getting somebody to respond to their needs. And there's a real commitment, indeed a passion, both on your part and also Ann Marie Sidroni's part, to respond to people who come through the door. And I just want to thank you on behalf of the Board for, for that commitment to your work.
Thank you. And thank you for recognizing Ann Marie. She does a great job. And we get a tremendous amount of support from Public Health and my boss, Alan Balsam. And Lloyd's here today, Dr. Gellino. And when the young man came in and was in crisis, the fact that I had a psychologist two doors down I could bring over and say, "Get over here and help me," was a big help. And I can't tell you enough. Or when I'm trying to find ways to give people health insurance, especially widows that can't go to the VA, having Dr. Gellino there to help me with that is amazing also.
Well, I, I will just add that you, you are all working together in a team where sharing resources. And it's not even material things necessarily, but just the fact that you can call on your colleagues and say, "I have this situation right now. We really need to do something." And then everybody comes together and you get it done. And we all truly appreciate that. But it's especially important that you're doing it for a group who are struggling so hard with the bureaucracy.
Thank you very much.
You're, you're cutting through it in ways that you should be proud of. And we're proud of you. So thanks.
Now, I'll just add my thanks and thank you also for level funding.
Thank you.
Right.
Makes it all the more remarkable that you can do it and not ask for increases.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
We'll move on to the Health and Human Services, Dr. Balsam.
Thank you, Alan Balsam, Public Health and Human Services. It is hard to follow Bill, and I'm humbled by, by the work that, that he's doing. And, and being able to work with him is, is not just a pleasure, but an honor. Let me start by just reminding you that next week is Public Health Week, if you've forgotten. And if you go to our website, on the front page of the town's website, it's a constellation of activities that we've organized with our partners to recognize Public Health Week. And so I hope you'll consider coming out, those of you watching at home and those in the audience, to, to celebrate Public Health Week, I guess.
Participate.
Have to go to the gym one more time?
I did my hour today. And I'm feeling good about it. This was a good year for, for the Brookline Department of Public Health and Human Services. We published Volume 14 of Healthy Brookline, which are the youth behavior risk factors, which I know you've seen and we have online. We have hard copies and online copies. We completed the transition to handheld inspection devices and printers for all our inspectional work. Working with planning and community development, we rolled out the food truck program. And by the way, we'll be coming before you in a couple of weeks to offer you Part Two of the food truck program, which we'll be rolling out in May. I think you'll be pleased with it. We met the challenge of a challenging flu season. This is a flu season which was among the more serious. We had a particularly bad one in 2009, but this was equivalent to 2003. So there was an upsurge in cases. We had over 130 laboratory-confirmed cases of flu in Brookline. So that means there were many more that were not lab-confirmed. And because of the way the press approached it, it led to an upsurge in demand for vaccine. We were fortunate to be able to meet that, that demand because we had ordered additional doses early in the season. But many communities were not able to be in that position. And we were able to help other communities with additional vaccine purchases. We recruited eight very well-qualified graduate students to work with each division in order to help them accomplish their goals and objectives. We implemented kennel inspections, which was... We implemented kennel inspections, um, which was part of our charge from the town meeting last time. And so now all kennels are being inspected and in fact, all kennels have to be looked at by parks and open space to see where their animals are being walked. Uh, we've identified a series of performance measures, which includes tracking the, the percentage of inspection permits that are available online. We also looked at life expectancy and you might have noted that Brookline has the longest life expectancy of any municipality in Massachusetts and that, the reasons for that are the subject for another, uh, meeting perhaps. Uh, we're tracking high school, uh, students using tobacco and tracking, uh, the difference between our, our school children and those in the state. By the way, we're looking pretty good here. Um, and, and a bunch of other, uh, obesity measures and things like that. So we're, we're embracing the performance measurement, uh, issue and trying to track the things that we think are the most important for people who are interested in Brookline. Of course, we continued our campaign to leak nutrition and physical activity to climate change, including Brookline on the Move. We maintain the Medical Reserve Corps, uh, the Friends of Brookline Public Health and our Peer Leadership Program in the high school, which works with high school students and middle school students. So it's been, it's been a busy year, um, but I think a good one. We have a lot of stuff coming up in the future. Um, we're going to be going online with all food service inspection reports in July and we'll be rolling that out. That's one of the things that's most in demand, that we get the most requests for. Uh, we'll be increasing on June one to nineteen, uh, the age at which, um, sales of tobacco can take place. So with our new permits, we'll be doing that. We'll be meeting with all the operators and also working with students to educate them about that. We've already started that process. And we're beginning the planning for the implementation of the ban on plastic bags and polystyrene. And as I indicated to, uh, to your chairperson, uh, this is, this is, when you get down to it, this is, this is a ton of work. And the plastic bag one in particular presents some unique challenges for us, but, um, we're starting to work on that, uh, now. Um, we'll be rolling out, as I said, the new food truck program. And, um, I think another big challenge for this year will be, um, the, the consideration of the launching of a dispensary, uh, for medical marijuana in, in Brookline. So we do have a, a proposal to have a, a moratorium until the state issues their guidelines. And, um, I think in short order, once that happens, we'll be able to, I hope by, by November, roll out a proposal for what our zoning restrictions might be. Um, if not, we'll have to kick it down the road a little bit more. In terms of the budget, there are some changes. I think, uh, you know, the biggest change has to do with the town administrator's proposal to reorganize the human relations, the youth resources department and to elevate our colleague, Lloyd Gellino, to be the new human relations and human services administrator, to bring in a support person, a human services specialist, to support, uh, Dr. Gellino and to move Bobby Sneerson, uh, our ADA, uh, person into that group and to round it out with a, a trio of, of graduate students. Um, we're also, uh, seeking a half-time public health inspector to help, uh, Pat Maloney's group accomplish all the myriad tasks that we've been assigned to accomplish. And finally, we're asking for a new vehicle for the weights and measures inspector who's driving a fifteen-year-old vehicle clunking down the road. Um, and an increase for our, our subcontract for mental health services, which we, we do every year. So I think that that's, uh, my summary. Um, obviously, there's a lot more below the surface, but I think that's enough for now and I'm glad to field your questions.
I have a, probably, I'm sure you have an answer because it struck me, going through your workload indicators, seems like there are more dog bites. I, I see reported rabies exposure, which turns out to be very closely statistically to under-community health animal bites to humans.
Well, there's certainly, uh, I'd say the, the majority of the rabies, potential rabies exposures and prophylaxis are due to bats.
Aha, not.
Um, as you, you may recall.
Right.
Every summer, there's a ton of bat, uh, issues and we strongly recommend working with your primary care physician.
Right.
Uh, consideration of prophylaxis if you wake up and there's a bat in the room, especially if your kid wakes up with a bat in the room and you know, you don't know if there's been a significant exposure.
Right. Okay, Slickman-Daly?
Yeah, I had, I had a couple of questions. I noticed under the environmental health section, uh, objectives was to continue to address the growing concerns related to bedbugs. I was kind of horrified to read that because I thought that they, I thought our concern was going down on bedbugs. Is it still, is it still a growing problem?
Um, well, let's put it this way, the denominator is quite small and so when you say growing, it's, everything is relative. But we have had, I'd say, four or five cases in the last year of bedbugs. And the thing about bedbugs is it, the, the fear factor is quite pronounced when you, when you have a bedbug situation, particularly in a multi, um.
I'm fearful just reading about them. I'm not.
Um, well, you shouldn't be because, um, you can deal with it. I mean, we can, we can deal with it.
I'd rather not, thank you.
But, but there are, you know, we've had a half a dozen cases, I guess you could say.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Um, Alan, thank you for your, uh, presentation. Uh, at last fall's town meeting, as, uh, town meeting was considering the plastic ban, uh, plastic bag ban and the styrofoam container ban, uh, you made a, uh, an eloquent and short plea to the, to the, to town meeting, saying that there were budget impacts from the, the increased demands that would be put on you. And, I mean, I'm seeing some increase here, but maybe you can put a fine point on it for us.
Sure.
What is the impact on those two warrant articles that passed on your department and how are we seeing that translated into this budget?
Okay, well, first of all, I'd like to say that there are four new programs that we've undertaken in the, in the last year. The first is the food truck program. We now have a dozen.
I counted more than four.
Well, at least four. Four that I can recall. So there's a dozen food trucks that we license and inspect and we, um, monitor them. And, um, also there's individual special events. I would say two or three years ago, you had X number of, of individual special one-day events. You now have three times X because all the elementary schools are getting into that business. So there's tremendous demand on us to monitor what's going on, uh, at all of these events. So food trucks is number one. The kennels is number two. Um, we have, I think, nine kennels that we inspect now. Um, none, none of these issues in and of themselves are overwhelming. It's just when you pile them all together. The plastic bag issue has to do, you, you know, there's, there's probably eight, nine-hundred retailers in this town. And, um, when you start going through nine-hundred retail, I mean, I, I might be off on a, a, you know, by a hundred or so, but I have a list of them all that I got from the town assessor and from economic development. And when you go through this and then you try to discern, uh, which of them are over twenty-five-hundred square feet and then which of them that are restaurants, um, do more than fifty percent of their business in retail, th- this is, this is not an easy thing. And so figuring all that stuff out is what we're trying to do right now. And we're going to be, have to work with all of the people. I'd say, at the end of the day, there'll be two hundred places that have to conform with the plastic bag ban. So we'll, and many of them, we don't inspect. We don't inspect a dress shop in Coolidge Corner, but we'll have to be involved with that dress shop now around the plastic bag issue. We would never go into that place. And so there are all these retailers that we would never have intersected with or have an interaction with. We will now have to have an interaction with them. And the polystyrene ban, I haven't gotten to that one yet. I'm working on the plastic bags to start, but we'll get to that soon enough. But it's also, you know, just as we did with the trans fat ban, um, there'll be, there's got to be a lot of education that goes on. These things, you don't snap your finger and then it happens. You've got to work with these people.
So, Alan, I mean, are we seeing that, I think you mentioned an extra half an inspector?
Right.
Can we say that that half an inspector is necessary because of plastic bags, polystyrene and, and food trucks?
And kennels, yes.
And chemists?
Yes.
Yeah, I actually have a couple of questions for Lloyd. If I might.
Oh, well.
He's here.
Did, did somebody lose a key?
Oh.
Hi, Lloyd Gellino, Public Health Department.
Um, so Lloyd, I, and I know there's some disagreement as to whether this, uh, change should occur with you taking on what used to be, what used to be some of, um, Steve Bressler's responsibilities. But I know you as someone who's involved with, um, senior citizen issues. That's where I ran into you particularly. But tell me what else you currently do and what's your plan, if this should go through, for how you're going to do all of this?
Okay, I think, um, I'll answer the first, the second question first because I think Alan and actually Mel laid out a sort of a structure of how the, bring, bringing it back into the, um, health department, excuse me, bringing it into the health department will actually work. Primarily, I would be overseeing a lot, focusing primarily on what Steve's responsibilities were because I think folks really need to have some part of that process for them. The other, the human services specialist will actually assume a lot of the responsibilities that I currently have.
Lloyd?
Yes?
Somebody in the audience is saying they can't hear what you're speaking.
I'm too soft, huh? Okay, hold on. Um, uh, I'll start again. I would just say that, um, a lot of the responsibilities I currently have right now will, will fall in part to the human services specialist, which, which is, uh, a position that's being created within the department. They would probably do a lot of the insurance information, the food stamp stuff, um, maybe sit in a couple, like the hoarding task force, um, a couple of, uh, positions like that. Plus, they will have an intern, interns working with them too. So anything that's related to information gathering or disseminating to the community, there will be having those roles. So the structure's there. Now, you, the, the first question is, what are the things that I do? And I started, uh, well, I, I sit on the H. Friendly, um, uh, City Initiative Board on this, uh, right currently, I am the, um, um, the, the co-chair of that and we have a couple of good things that we, we're doing right now. One of them being involved with the health fair that's coming up. Um, I do a lot of substance use work, mostly in consultation to community members and, um, I do carry a small caseload, um, usually the ones that, um, are, I hate to say it, but, um, more entrenched in their substance use than, than, and need a lot of more coordination. I take those folks on, pretty similar to what Jerry used to do. Jerry Charlie, my, my, the former person. Um, one of the things that we're doing is with the hoarding task force, as I mentioned, um, we are very active in trying to stay current in what the, um, current clinical and environmental practices are in the town, uh, excuse me, in the nation, and we try to bring it here. Um, it's, actually, I love the group. It's a fantastic group and we work in conjunction with, uh, Brookline Mental Health Center and various other community members who have an invested interest in, in dealing with this. And I, I, what I do is I actually do a lot of collaboration with di- different town, um, human service agencies in the town and looking for gaps in services and seeing what we can do to, um, pull those together for folks. As Bill mentioned, I do a lot of work with him as well.
And you would not be taking on the, the, uh, the cable monitoring and some of those other functions that Steve did as well. You would not be taking those on?
No, no. And wisely so because I don't have the expertise in those areas, so.
Right.
Well, you got cable TV, doesn't it?
Well, no, actually, I got basic cable.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Other question?
Well, actually, um.
Yeah, sorry.
I really wanted to talk about, the one thing I, one I forgot and it's very important, is actually domestic violence. I do a lot of work with the town of that, so.
Oh.
And, and also Lloyd, um, has sat in, uh, and been involved with the Commission for the Disabled.
Uh, right.
So, um.
And, and that's one of the things we hope with this, this reorganization, that by creating this new group, we'll be able to provide, continue support for the commission, uh, for the disabled, the Women's Commission, which has not, unfortunately, has not gotten support, um, and, and would very much like to get support and, um, and of course, continuing to support the important work of the Human Relations Commission as well.
Slickman-Baker?
Yeah, we're actually kind of jumping ahead in, in the, uh, order here. But one, I, I actually think that one of the, uh, one of the important changes in this would be to, uh, recognize the, the need for support, uh, for the Women's Commission. Because, I mean, I recall, within the last year, we had a request for five hundred dollars or something for, um, for an event that they were putting on. And, uh, basically, they have been ignored in the budget and, uh, it's, it's really a, a very, very small amount of support that they're looking for or, uh, being provided in this budget. And, uh, they've, they've really been kind of the poor stepchild of this budget to this point.
And yet, and still look what they've accomplished.
Absolutely, absolutely. But, you know, it was, the striking, uh, circumstance was when they had to come here to, to ask for some very small stipend for an event. And, uh, it became obvious that we were providing nothing to them essentially in, in our prior budgets.
We're not going to let that happen again.
Apparently not. And, and I'm glad.
Okay, are there questions for Mr. Balsam?
I just, one follow-up question on that. I mean, is there going to be, are there actually, do you see some advantages to, um, having this brought into your department? The, the, the human relations.
Well, certainly in terms of sharing resources, bringing more resources to bear, to, to support the three commissions. Um, I, you know, when we brought Veteran Services in to Health and Human Services, I think th- this is the model that we're using, i- is the same model, uh, when we brought Veteran Services in and it certainly has worked. I think Bill and Anne-Marie feel that way. Um, and I hope a year from now, the commission, uh, the Human Relations Commission will feel the exact same way. Um, I know change is difficult, um, but I think a, a fair-minded person would say that the chances for this working are good.
Mm-hmm, okay. Um, are you prepared to discuss in any way the program aspects of human relations as it used to be? I know that, that, um, there, there will be, um, some functions and I think, uh, what was just mentioned, um, had to do with cable operations, may get farmed out to other, uh, areas in the town?
I think perhaps, uh, the town administrator can best address that since it's its proposal.
Okay.
But, yeah, it's pretty clear in the proposal.
Sure. You know, over time, um, for whatever reason, um, certain, um, ancillary duties were assigned to Mr. Bressler of the Human Relations that are incompatible with, with the, the fundamental core work that, that he does. And, uh, he's been very supportive of those and done a great job. But as this transition takes place, I would, uh, and I have proposed to, uh, to bring the cable TV and actually bring it into, into my office with the support of the legal department. And also, um, the, uh, some of the contractual issues that are, are related to, uh, some MCAD requirements, um, I, I'm sure Lloyd will have involvement of them and the Human Relations Commission will still monitor them, but I feel that they're more suited towards our, our procurement officer, our procurement, since they're contractual issues and he in their office is involved in monitoring and, um, enforcing.
Contract compliance.
Compliance with contracts of all sorts of kinds that, that he, he in their department is better equipped to do that.
Okay, um, shall we move on? And the next item is, uh, Human Resources and Personnel Benefits, Ms. DeBeau.
Good evening. Sandra DeBeau, Human Resources Director. Um, I'll talk about my own budget first. It's so much easier. Uh, so we saw a point four percent increase in our budget, primarily, um, related to personnel fixed costs. Sorry, there's a lot of, it's a laptop up here. Kind of in. It's kind of in my way. Some of the things that we accomplished this year in keeping with our charge to provide a system of HR administration that is uniform, fair, and efficient. We had a couple of reorganization projects that we were working on. One had to do with, I mentioned it last year, cross-training, implementing a cross-training program, if you will, with, within the Finance Department. And that is actually up and running now. And we had our first individual go before the HR Board, well, we brought the position before the HR Board because she was fully cross-trained. And this is an individual who has been able to help out in the gaps throughout the department on a really good, real basis and really help out. And so that seems to be going well. They have recently hired a new employee in that department who was told upfront that she's going to expect to be cross-trained as well. So that model seems to be finally moving forward. The other thing that we did with cross-training in the back of our minds and efficiencies, trying to separate out performance issues from process, is we brought in a consultant to look at the Public Safety Business Office. It had been brought together about 10 years ago. We felt like it needed a fresh look. There were some issues going on with some of the performance of some of the personnel. And in the end, we decided to physically combine the Public Safety Business Office with the parking and traffic, so they, traffic, so they've moved across. We're in the process right now of hiring a mid-level supervisor who will manage the day-to-day work of those two groups, which should allow Captain Grothman and Anthony Ansaldi to do more of their work rather than doing the day-to-day operations that certainly Anthony was getting pulled into. So we're still at the beginning phases of that. We're at the implementation phase, but it's exciting. It's kind of a new model for us. Library, we're doing not so much a reorganization, but an assessment of their job descriptions because they didn't have any. I'm not quite sure why, I don't know if they didn't have any under civil service or what, but they're going, but what we did have was going back decades. And with regard to the Public Safety Business Office, though, just stepping back a little bit, one of the principles that we're using is the, you may have heard of the lean philosophy or the kaizen philosophy. It comes from Toyota and, you know, working in teams and collaboration and all that. But when we really started looking at it, we realized that it was lining up very much with another thing that my office has been involved with, and that's performance management. Last year, we got a grant, if you will, or we were accepted in a pilot program with the State's Administration and Finance Office, who was putting together a pilot program to bring municipalities in line with what the state is doing with regard to performance management. And so we rolled that program out with police and we rolled it out with DPW. Police was a little bit more familiar with this type of model. And I think that DPW, it was a new way of looking at data and sort of putting forth performance measures. We are gonna continue with that program. I think I might have described to you the pilot at some point when we started, but we actually had an intern who was working with us or an analyst. We've decided that what we really need to do this year is focus more on educating everybody or getting a common language for performance management. We're looking at it in many different ways. It's, and we need to sort of bring it together. And so Melissa and Sean and Mel and myself are gonna be looking at other ways to bring that training to our supervisor, our department heads. So what else have we been doing? The other thing, our primary, one of our primary focuses is that we're charged with developing and administering fair and equitable policies. And so we had a lot of policies that we worked on this year. The Family Medical and Military Leave Act had been revised a couple times over the last four or five years. We finally got a workable policy together and got it approved before the HR Board. We had the Policy Against Discrimination, Sexual Harassment and Retaliation. We had to revise that to keep in line with the law that extended protection to gender identity. Quarry, there was a lot of quarry reform that went on. We had to completely change our policies and our procedures. We do a lot of pre-employment quarry, particularly for all the summer camps, the seasonal employees that we do. But we also had some contractual changes, primarily with AFSMI, where not only are we gonna be doing pre-employment, but we're gonna be, pre-employment criminal background investigations, but we're gonna do them on an ongoing basis for those individuals who have unsupervised access to vulnerable populations, which are defined as the disabled, the elderly, and children. And so, you know, there's a lot of work that's done in the parks and the schools by a lot of our employees who aren't really supervised. And we want to make sure that they all, you know, are operating within the confines of the law. So that, so we've did, did a lot of work with quarry this year. We have an EEO policy draft, which I know you all are aware of. The Human Relations and Youth Services Commission has one, there's two, and there's a whole analysis going on as to how the bylaws interact. But it is something that we did draft. We also did a lot of work, or continue to do a lot of work, and I provided in my materials the brand-new 90-something page. I apologize for the length of it. Third annual report, well, it'll be up on the website tomorrow. The reason why it's so bulky is because it does have the employee survey that we did this year attached in full. There's some really interesting results. And so even though the survey had been released previously, I wanted to have it in that report as well.
We should say that this is your report on workforce inclusion and diversity.
Yes, yep. And I'm assuming that you all didn't have a chance to read it last night and that you might want me to come back again and talk about it, and I'd be happy to do that. A couple of other things that we did, though, was that we submitted our report to the Commonwealth Compact. We had done a dry run of that for one year, sort of got a baseline. And then we collected the data and we actually reported the data, which reminds me, while the stuff doesn't fall off, that they're having. Now I gave away, so I don't know what the date is. It's in May.
Tuesday, May 21st.
Yes. They're going to be releasing the next report. Now, this will be the first report that we are a part of. So I think it's pretty exciting.
I gather our governor thinks it's exciting too.
Yes, our governor thinks it's exciting as well, as he'll be speaking. So it's been really exciting to be part of the Commonwealth Compact. They have been very supportive of the initiatives we've been doing. They've had some great networking opportunities for us. When we, through, through my work with them, we have, we have worked with the Partnership, the Association of Latino Professionals in Finance and Accounting, the National Association of Asian American Professionals, and the Nexus Alliance to, when we were hiring some of our higher-level positions. And I want to talk a little bit too about what I'm trying to do. They have a, they have a couple models within the Commonwealth Compact of associations or organizations such as the business schools. All the graduate business schools have a collaboration within the Commonwealth Compact. And what they do is they share resumes, they talk about the vacancies they have. If they get a resume and they don't have a vacancy, but they know one of the other schools does, this is for professors, then they share that information. And that is such a wonderful idea for a municipality because we don't have a lot of growth opportunity for our employees. We don't have a lot of turnaround. And if we can share the information of the very good employees that we have working for us or vacancies that are available in other towns, I think it would be, it's a really good opportunity. I've talked to Cambridge, Arlington, Lexington, and I'm forgetting another, who are all interested. I have been caught up in some other things in the last couple months, so I haven't been able to jump all over this the way that I wanted to. But that's gonna be the second half of the year, is to really get those people to start, for us to start meeting on a regular basis and collaborating more. And like the Partnership and the Nexus Alliance, what they do is they are mentoring. They, the Nexus Alliance is primarily African-American men. The Partnership does a lot of different minority groups. And what they do is they mentor and they also do talent management. So if we could get municipalities to sort of operate in that way, I think that that's a really exciting opportunity. But work needs to be done. But I think there are people who are ready to face this issue. We also did a lot of education on, we did MCAD training for all the firefighters. We also did an MCAD course at the FIRE Academy this year, which not only was beneficial to our own candidates or recruits, but also the other ones that were from other cities availing themselves to our academy. We also have been working, the Collins Center has a very good supervisory leadership development program that I participated in the pilot and I really liked it a lot. And we brought it to Brookline and I'm gonna try to do it again. Because what I liked about the supervisory leadership is it's, the focus is what are other people bringing to the table? When an employee is coming to you, what are they saying? So it's about listening skills, it's about other perspectives, showing that there are other perspectives, that people are not always coming from the same page. And that is an enormous part of the diversity and inclusion work that we're trying to do. And so there is a section specifically on diversity within that whole training. But the mediation, the increase in communication, it's a really good substantive program that we've now put 20, 21 supervisors through. And so we want to do it again. It's the whole idea of what we're trying to do is branding a certain way of dealing with performance issues or employee conflict that inevitably arises with interpersonal disputes. And to, rather than just pushing them aside or encouraging them to finish, or figure it out themselves, but to deal with it straight on. And I think that if we continue to have this model, then the department heads and the supervisors are gonna know that they're gonna have to perform at a certain way and what is expected of them. So I'm really excited about this leadership group because I think it's, it's the right focus of how you speak with people, how you are respectful of people, how you keep the focus on work performance and not personality issues and things like that. One, the other thing that we did with regard to diversity and inclusion is the employee survey. Now, this was really exciting and a lot of work. But it was really exciting because it was the first time it's ever been done. And we got almost 25% of our employees to participate. And from a statistical point of view, which I cannot explain to you, but there's this target number that you're supposed to get to make sure that it's somewhat valid. And we hit 85%, 85.7%, I think, of that target that we were supposed to get. And so I think that for the first survey that we did, we had a pretty good response. The survey is included in there along with the report. And so I won't go into too much detail. But I think it begs, what we found, and Lloyd, Dr. Jelenow, he worked on me, on this with me extensively. And what we found is that people, for the most part, were very, thought that they should be respectful of other people and their differences. And they all, and I'm talking like 94%, I mean, it was a huge amount, that thought that you should choose your words carefully so as not to offend. And when we, we asked two questions, whether you felt that you were treated appropriately and respectfully with regard to many categories such as age, your gender, your sexual orientation, your race. And how did you feel others were treated in the workplace along those same ones? And they were surprisingly high. I mean, I expected there to be a little bit more variability. So that's all good stuff. But then there was some curious, there were some curious results with regard to questions like the town should focus on increasing the diversity of staff, the town, and another question, should focus more attention on the diversity of leadership. And the results were really mixed. And the question is, why? Like, did we have to ask that question differently? Were we not asking it appropriately? And another really important question that I'm so glad that we put in was, I am tired of hearing, reading, seeing, learning about diversity. Again, we got really mixed results on that. So it just, what we took away from it was, we need to open up this dialogue. We need to define what these terms are that we're talking about. What are the protected classes? What is diversity? What is discrimination? I mean, we cannot assume that people have common understandings of any of that. One of the things that we're gonna be doing, so what we were doing previously in the first two years, the first year, we were just trying to find our way, and I put together that working group to help me. The second year, we were really looking at leadership buy-in. I interviewed Betsy I know and Mel, probably more than once, as to what our priorities were with regard to diversity. And I went through, we went through all the department heads. So our focus was really on getting the leadership to understand that this is something that we were taking seriously, to get a sense of what they were doing. That all got reported out to the Commonwealth Compact. And now I think it's important to bring the employees in. And so we did this first survey, we're gonna be doing another survey, but we're gonna do the survey by involving employees as well and put together a focus group and to start bringing them into the process of defining what these diversity and inclusion initiatives are. And I've talked with Mel, we haven't worked out all the details yet, but one of the things that I'm asking him to help me with is to hire a consultant to work with me for some time on how to approach this most appropriately. So that, that's what we're doing with diversity and inclusion. I could go on, but I won't because I have more stuff to talk to you about. The other thing I just want to mention is our contracts with all the unions and all our collective bargaining agreements are, have expired as of 6/30/2012. We are closest, or we're making the most progress right now with police, AFSMI is a close second, Teamsters and, I'm forgetting someone, the engineers, who should not be forgotten. They are, have both asked to sit down with us and FIRE, they have new leadership, and I think they're just holding back and enjoying that senior step before they come back to the table. So we're working diligently on trying to move those forward. The PEC, we came to an agreement to extend the GIC for three more years, coverage under the GIC. We have taken advantage of the GIC's offer to cover dental for retirees, which previously they did not have that benefit, which is 100% funded by the retiree, but it's something that we had to get their agreement on. We continue to have the HRA as part of our agreement to go forward with the GIC. It's at a lower amount, I think we reported this to you previously, but the amount that, the $70,000 that we have allocated, we believe that we will not get claims above that. We're also offering a new We're also offering a new supplemental life benefit that our employees will be able to purchase on top of the little $5,000 policy that they can get now. This is a new benefit that hopefully will help a lot of people who would not otherwise be eligible for health, for life insurance. And so all of that will be discussed ad nauseam during our open enrollment, which begins April 9th and, or April 10th and ends May 9th. So we're coming into that fun time of year in my office. And I think that's all I have to say about my department.
Well, it seems like it was quite a lot.
Selectman Daly, you have questions?
I actually did read through the big report.
Oh, thank you.
So I have a couple of questions. But the training you were talking about, is that the same, as you said, you funded supervisor training conducted by the Mass Commission Against Discrimination? Was that the, you were telling us about some training a minute ago?
Talking about the leadership group and putting 21 supervisors through.
Is that the same thing as the N-CAD?
No, that's different, right. So we did, we did, we had, Leslia Noble, the Assistant Director, had done the Train the Trainer Program through the MCAD. So she, she did all the firefighters. All the firefighters were trained on it. Then we also did an academy class, but we are continuing, like, we're anticipating, we're setting up training, I think it's starting on Friday, with DPW. So we're going to go through all the DPW employees, and we're bringing the MCAD back to do supervisory training. So it's just something we're going to continue to do.
Is that, do you know if the schools are doing anything like that?
I do not know off the top of the head, my head, but that is actually, I'm glad you're bringing that up, because that's one of the things that Angela Allen and I have been talking about. You know, I had really, when I was in the midst of all of, all of the work I was doing on diversity last year with my working group, the former HR director had been in our working group, and when Angela came on, we just didn't, she didn't join the group, she was too new, blah, blah. So we've been talking a lot about more collaborative issues and a closer relationship in the upcoming year. Because I think we can both learn a lot from each other.
Okay. Selectman Goldstein.
Oh, thank you. Sandra, thanks for your very comprehensive presentation. I noticed that workers' comp claims are up pretty substantially from last year, almost a half a million dollars in payout. And I'm wondering if you can comment on that, maybe tell us why we're seeing that increase.
So you're talking about the costs, right, not the actual numbers?
Yes.
Yeah, because we had anticipated this last year, because we had, we just had some really serious surgeries that we had to cover. We don't expect that to be a trend, it was just a bunch of them all happening at once. It's not normal for us.
So, but this year's budget, does it make a similar provision for it? In other words, in your estimate for 2013, you're back, you're up at the, pretty much the same level. I don't know what your budget number is, but it looks like you're anticipating those same increased costs.
Well, that we...
I'm looking at your workload indicators.
Right. And Sean, yes. So what, part of what you're seeing here, part of what you saw from last year was just these really serious surgeries. What you're seeing here is, I think, just an anticipation of rising healthcare costs.
Thank you.
Yep.
Selectman Banker.
Yeah, you mentioned the training and said you'd put 21 supervisors through that training. What, when we define supervisors, how many do we have in the town as a whole?
Well, when we, when we did MCAD training for all supervisors, and that was pretty much all frontline and up, it was 175.
Okay.
So this training was more for department heads and the division heads and the upper level. But we would like to, you know, continue to roll it out with the lower level. It's, it's pretty intensive, and that's part of the problem, but, but that's who we did, that's where we started.
Okay, and the plan to roll it out to lower levels would be what?
In this, we're going to try to do it, the year is going by me quickly. We had a special arrangement with the Collins Center that they actually, they have this program on a regular basis, that they actually came here and did it. And I think that we would have to do it in the next fiscal year at this point. Does that answer the question?
The next fiscal year being fiscal year 15?
Oh, no, I'm sorry. No, 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 I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I think that's what she meant.
Yes, the upcoming year, it would, because we're doing some training now, I'm sorry.
Okay, and any idea of how broadly you expect it to reach in the next round?
We're going to really have to look at it as to which departments we hit last time, which departments. We try to get a good mix of different departments, because we find that they learn a lot from each other with these different perspectives. We've had some turnover, so we want to hit those.
To go back to the upper levels again?
Right, so, so it's hard to tell, but that is the intent, is to try to go down a little bit further.
Is the 20 or so, is that the group that the Collins Center wants to work with? Is that, I mean, would that be the expectation, that it would be that number again?
It's about that number. It has to do with how many they want in the training session itself, because they break up into groups, it's very one-on-one.
Right.
But it also is a budgetary issue for us as well.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. DeBeau?
Thank you very much for your very comprehensive presentation, and it's very clear that you have quite a broad range of activities under your department. And I particularly appreciate the fact that it seems that the efforts that you are making are moving forward in a very constructive way. I know the collective bargaining agreements are sort of all hanging out there, but that's, I guess, to be expected, it's not un-normal. But I am happy to see that the reports are getting done, and also the, it seems to me, the trainings that are really important are reaching further into the workforce, and I'm glad to hear about that one as well. So, thank you very much.
Do you want me to talk about the personnel benefits?
Uh, do you really want to talk about personnel benefits?
Only if you want to hear about them.
Well, you should probably do it briefly, yes, I think you should, sorry. I don't want to cut you off.
No, that's okay. So there was a 10.4% increase for all the personnel benefits. I can talk to most of them, except for the pensions and the OPEB, which Sean can speak to you about.
Yes, Sean speaks OPEB very well.
Yes, he does, because he loves it. So, and I think that you've been briefed on the GIC increase, the health insurance increase.
We had projected 5%, but when, when it actually came out, the new rates,
they were lower than we expected, so there's going to be a reduction in about $172,000. But when you include the growth of new enrollees, overall, it's a 6.7% increase. Did I get that right, Sean? The HRA I talked about, per the agreement, $70,000, which was a reduction of what we had in there before. Group health insurance, I spoke about briefly, that we now have a supplemental plan, group plan that we're going to be offering, that's 100% paid by the employee, but it's great insurance that they would not have otherwise been able to get. Workers' comp, we talked about a little bit, but Sean is infusing that budget with about $520,000, because the fund overall was dipping a little bit, and he just wanted to build it back up. And it had in part to do with those surgeries that we were talking about. Same thing with, no, public safety, actually, there's a decrease, because it had been increased last year, and therefore it doesn't have to be increased as much this year. And unemployment compensation, also getting a little boost this year, just to bring the fund balance up, so.
I just have one quick question.
Quick question.
The group health insurance, the number, it says it's a 7.4% increase, and I thought we'd heard it was not going to be quite as high as that.
Right, well, there's the rates, and then there's the enrollment. And so what we're seeing is increased enrollment in the plans, primarily, I think, through the, you're seeing the increased employment in the schools, to deal with the school enrollment, and that, that's where we're seeing a lot of the increase.
So the 7.4% is accurate?
Yes, it encompasses both the rate increase, which was around 4%, and then increased enrollment in the plan.
But I think because of the lower rates, it was reduced. There was a memo that went out to you all about the fact of the rates. And the overall cost is 6.7%, not 7.4%.
Okay. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Ms. DeBeau. We will take up this again with the full budget. Okay, and now we are moving on to item 10, consideration of a special study committee to evaluate the bylaws of the Human Relations Youth Resources Commission and the Human Resources Board. And Selectman Daly, I believe you have drafted...
Yes, I, I, we heard, you know, I, after I drafted one version of this a few weeks ago, we heard comments from the public, and I, I took those comments and tried to work them into a revised draft. And so this, what you have before you is, my revised draft was a little bit of work from several of the other Selectmen.
Yeah, right.
And it sets up a committee, I've called it the Selectmen's Committee on Diversity, Equal Employment, Opportunities, and Affirmative Action. And I see Rita McNally's here tonight, she's one of the people. I don't have the full list of people who would serve on this committee. Rita has asked, and she has agreed, but the, I'm still trying to contact some other people, so I can't give you a full list at this time. But basically, it's, it's to look at...
Well, we're not, we're not making appointments now, so I think, in fact, it's probably okay. We'll...
Anyway, it's basically to look at the bylaws dealing with the Human Relations Youth Resources Commission and the interaction between that commission and human, the Human Resources Department, and look at the roles and responsibilities, and come up with some way to move forward.
Okay, and I'm, just sort of briefly, I think it's helpful to kind of review how we got here. Several years ago, the former Chair of the Human Relations Commission and Vice Chair and some other members came to the Board of Selectmen and said, you know, we're charged with doing a lot of things that we aren't currently doing, or if we're not doing them, or if we are, we're not doing them very well, and asked for some thoughts on how the commission could properly fulfill its mission going forward. And I will admit that at that point in time, we didn't have as much information and history as we do now. There's been a lot of research that's been done in the intervening period, up to and including, now there is on the town's website, for anybody who's interested, if you go to the, I think if you go to the Town Council Department, there's a link which includes a wealth of documentation on the history of the Human Relations Commission and the various responsibilities it's held over the years. But just very briefly, it was, bylaw was first passed in 1970 as the result of a fairly exhaustive study by Committee on Urban Responsibilities. At that time, it included 130 citizens, it took more than a year to accomplish its work, and it made a number of recommendations that covered a broad expanse, including jobs or work, helping people with jobs, housing issues, community relations, education, and finance. And among the issues that were discussed at that time were things like redlining, which was a discriminatory practice in the banking industry, having to do with not providing loans to everybody who came and asked for them. And having certain neighborhoods that were treated differently, and certainly they were practicing forms of discrimination. The bylaw that was passed then was very broad and included such language as, quote, "developing opportunities within Brookline and the metropolitan area for those who are discriminated against." It included language like "increasing the capacity of public and private institutions to respond to the problems of the disadvantages," "to adopt affirmative action guidelines," "to institute and assist development of educational programs," "and to promote equal rights and opportunities." And that's a short list, I think the full bylaw includes more. The bylaw was amended and then added the youth resources component. And the youth resources component was in action, I would say, it seems to be about a decade before the role of youth resources responsibilities were being taken on by other town departments, namely the school department, and to some extent, the recreation department. Today, there's a summer jobs program that's funded through the CDBG federal grant program. So many of those things that were envisioned for the Human Relations Commission got dispersed into other town departments and are still being done, but just not being done through the Human Relations Commission. Another significant change that took place was the enaction of a fair housing bylaw, which gave the commission a role as the local enforcement agent for the MCAD with regard to fair housing. And finally, in terms of overall impact, the town, and through the town meeting, actually, in the year 2000, established a human resources department with a human resources board. And in that bylaw are also embedded responsibilities for promoting diversity and ensuring equal opportunity for employment. So with that sort of dumb summary, and I admit there's a lot more to this, we, the Board of Selectmen, have been giving a lot of thought to what the best way to approach this would be, and that has brought us to consideration of an independent committee whose charge is really to review the bylaws, to look at changes in the legal environment, wherever there is either state or federal or local legal changes that we should become aware of, and give a lot of thought to what would be the best charge and role and way for the Human Relations Commission to operate in the 21st century. We believe it's very important for the commission to have a clear sense of its mission and to be charged with the responsibilities that are appropriate for this day and time. And that's really led to the discussion and the proposal for an independent committee.
Well, by independent, you mean a Selectmen's committee?
Selectmen's committee, I'm saying it's not going to be the Board of Selectmen, it's going to be other people.
Although there will be one Selectmen.
A Selectmen representative, yes, representation from the Board of Selectmen, but it will not be something that's undertaken and decided by the Board of Selectmen. The purpose really is to... The, the purpose, really, is to look at best practices, to look at all of those things that would improve our ability to either do what we were always doing better or undertake new tasks that we may not have thought about or were not considered in 1970 when the bylaw was first passed. Anyway, members of the board, if you have any thoughts or comments, I think what we were planning to do tonight is see if there were any language changes to the proposed draft and adopt the draft or adopt this as a charge, and then consider making appointments at a future time. So, Selectman Goldstein.
Thanks. And thanks, Selectman Daly, for your hard work on this and for, and I apologize, because I've got a couple of tiny tweaks that occurred to me at the last minute.
Tweaks are accepted.
But I do think this is the right, right approach here. My tiny tweaks are, at the end of the third paragraph, you're saying, further it is, the committee is charged with, and I'll skip forward now, to studying the interaction among these entities with regard to workplace issues, and in particular, human resources-related policymaking, equal opportunity and affirmative action guidelines and other measures as they relate to town employment. I think it should say, as they relate to diversity in town employment. Only because, when you talk about human resources-related policymaking as it relates to town employment, that could, you know, that could encompass a lot of things, and I think we need to refocus it in that, that part of the sentence, diversity in. And then, the, the next paragraph, where it says that, I'll read the beginning, "We ask the committee to suggest how responsibilities in this area should be allocated in conformity with existing local and state law." I think we should be saying local, state, federal, and constitutional law.
Local, state, federal, and constitutional.
Otherwise, I fully support this charge and the explanation.
Okay. Well, I have no problem with either of those. All right. Selectman Binka has more. Selectman Binka, your turn.
Yeah. I actually, there was the addition of civil service laws and, in that same paragraph. In looking at it, it, it is, I think, a little bit misplaced, and I take the blame for that. I would probably put it at the end of that paragraph, protection of employee rights under civil service laws and collective bargaining agreements. I think it probably-
That's, that would be the last-
Yeah, in the last clause.
Civil service.
I'm, I'll show-
I'm sorry, Selectman Binka, can you tell me exactly?
I would, I would just put it in the last, the very last line of the-
What, what's it?
The words, "civil service laws and," in the very, go to the next, the top of the next page.
Top of the next page. Insert it in the top, in the first line.
I think you're looking, I think you're looking at an earlier draft, Ken.
Oh, you may have a different-
No, I'm looking at the updated draft.
No, it's this one.
Well, no, no, there was one-
The one that was in other places tonight.
Sorry.
There you go. That's it.
Okay.
Page two, top.
So, employee rights under civil service laws and collective bargaining agreements. I think it probably fits better there. And then, if we go back to the second paragraph, Article three point, this committee is charged with reviewing any related bylaws, including Article 3.14. I just noticed this now, division of human, should that be relations there?
Oh, yeah.
I, I would, and, and there are a number of questions that I've raised, which are just editing questions and comments.
I think several people, when we talk about this, said, change the name, and I-
Yeah, yeah.
I have to agree, I think that changing the name-
So, I mean, I, I just think that before this goes out the door-
Right.
We just need to check the sites and the quotes.
Okay.
But those are the only substantive comments.
All right. But, but basically, to be clear, we're proposing to review the Articles, bylaw, and I'm saying Articles, because that's what the components of the bylaws are called, with regard to the Human Relations Commission, the Division, sorry, and the Human Resources Program Board and Office, fair employment practices with regard to contracts and fair housing, and I presume anything else that somebody discovers that's related to these matters.
Right, right. But just in looking at this, and particularly in the description, there were some sites that seemed to be incorrect and some quotes that seemed to be a little bit off. So, it's just, you know, really a matter of proofreading-
Yeah, right.
Before we finalize it. But the substance, I think, is fine.
I'd like us to vote on it tonight, subject to a final proofreading.
Well, we could certainly say, subject to final proofreading and, you know-
Yeah, absolutely.
Make sure that we don't have any errors in it. All right? So, any final thoughts from board members before we take a motion? Selectman Daly, would you like to move this?
Yes. Okay, I would like to move. I'm looking at the, the version that has the gray on the side, so we're all on the final version. I'd like to move this version, subject to a final proofreading, but-
With the amendments as noted?
And with the amendments, yes.
With the mentioned amendments tonight, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daly?
Aye.
Selectman Binka?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. And at another meeting, we will come forward with a list of members and a final version.
Yes, I've already reached out to some people, and there's a few more people I need to contact, but we'll try to get that soon.
We would like to do this sooner rather than later.
Right.
All right. And finally, a couple of warrant articles, presumably, given the hour?
These could take 30 seconds.
Okay. You've got 30 seconds.
All right. Recommend favorable action on Article 1. Nothing on Article 2 yet. Favorable action on Article 3. Been requested since, every year since, I believe, 1987. Article 4 would be a no action. Article 5, you can leave open if you want, but we're, we have no unpaid bills right now. Article 6 is an annual one since the 80s as well, favorable action, and 7, no action, because there's no amendments before you.
Do you want us to vote no action or take no action?
Yeah, I would recommend that we hold-
We could hold that one and, and, yeah, right.
Five and seven.
No, seven, I would recommend taking no action.
Two, five and six, sorry. Two, five and six.
Why six?
Wasn't that, oh, sorry. No, that's a yes.
Two, four, and five.
Two-
No, four, you can take a no-action vote. There'll be nothing.
Okay. Two and five, then, might be the ones we do not vote.
Okay.
If we do not vote those, then you can come back with something later.
Oh. And budget amendments? We're not gonna have any?
Nope.
Okay.
The 13.
He's telling us.
Not unless we get another blizzard.
That's this year. That's 13.
That's 13.
Well, isn't that what you asked about?
Yes, yeah, yes.
All right. So, unless I have misunderstood, let me just run through these very quickly. Our recommended, we are, I am going to recommend, based on the recommendation of Mr. Cronin, favorable action on Article-
Well, I don't think it's just because Mr. Cronin recommends it. I think it long, we have a longstanding tradition of voting in favor of-
Of course we should.
And as much as I respect Mr. Cronin, I think that-
Well said.
All right, fine.
You know, we've gotta make our own independent decisions here.
Of course we will. I was merely proposing favorable action on Article 1 and accepting, no, I will propose not, not to take a vote on Article 2.
We have to vote them separately.
We will. I'm just reviewing here, all right? We'll vote on Article 1, we will not vote on Article 2, we will vote on Article 3, we will vote on Article 4, we will not vote on Article 5, and we will not vote on Article 7?
No, we will, we will vote on 6.
6.
Vote on 6 and 7.
Vote on 6 and 7. Okay, no action on 7. Okay, all right. Okay, well, these are warrant articles. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak either, or it's a public here on warrant articles? Is there anyone present?
I should, I'll say what they are. Measures of wood and bark-
Oh, sorry.
Collective bargaining agreements, compensating balances, special appropriation closeouts, unpaid bills, doubling of property tax exemptions for the elderly, and you might want to talk on that one, Rita. And FY 2013 budget amendments.
All right. I move favorable action on Article 1, measures of wood and bark, and favorable action on Article 3, compensating balances, favorable action on special appropriations, closeouts, and-
No, no, sorry.
No, that's no action.
We're not-
I think we have to vote-
It's no action.
No action.
I think we should vote them separately.
All right, we'll, we won't vote that one. All right. And favorable action on 6, doubling of property tax exemptions. All right? So, that's 1, 3, and 6. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daly?
Aye.
Selectman Binka?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Now, I will move no action on Article 4, special appropriations, closeouts, and debt rescission. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daly?
Aye.
Selectman Binka?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
No action on 6.
And I'm gonna move no action on Article 7, FY 2013 budget amendments. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daly?
Aye.
Selectman Binka?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. And we will take up Articles 2 and 5 at a later time. And that concludes the Board of Selectmen's meeting for Wednesday, March 27th. We're not gonna take any more votes. Go ahead.
Can we just give you money and not go golfing?
Is there, is there a, is there a date? All right. Well, why, the best thing I would suggest is that we get some-